County Tennessee is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless the United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. This time Commissioner Hooks will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
And can I say a few quick words right before Commissioner Hooks' praise?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hooks and I talked about this. We have several county employees who are in deep need of prayer. I just wanted to list these off real quick before Commissioner Hooks' praise. First of all, we have two children of county employees currently receiving treatment at St. Jude's. Myla Sims, the daughter of Derek Sims, who's our Veteran Services Officer, and Alyssa Branham, the daughter of Malita Branham at the Health Department, and David Branham at the Rescue Squad. Please be praying for both of them. At the Sheriff's Office, we have an SRO, Chris Lee, who has been caring for his wife, who's battling cancer, and he recently learned his mother and sister also diagnosed with cancer. Bobby Anderson's awaiting open-heart surgery. In the Trustees' Office, Amy Torres, husband Michael, is undergoing treatment for colon cancer. In the Assessor's Office, Lisa Billings continues to recover from a massive heart attack that nearly took her life. In EMS, paramedic Cindy Sutton is the sister of Jeremy Sutton, who is the paramedic from Jefferson County that was killed last week. And then in the Codes Office, Glenn Cover had spinal surgery last week in his recovery. So please remember them in your prayers.
Let us pray. Father, as again it would come with humble hearts, Lord, and Father, in that we ask God that you take these individuals individually, Lord, because their individual needs. Lord, and look at each and every need that they may have, Lord, but most of all, lay your healing hand and hand upon them, Lord. Lord, we pray for the families that support them. Father, we pray of God, Father, Lord, that you just encourage them as they go forward in the days to come. With that, Lord, we give you the praise for it all. And Lord, and we ask that you bless this meeting. Lord, bless each and everything that's to come before us. Lord, let us conduct the meeting in decent and in order. And Father, if we do this, I know you'll give us the praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated and please silence your cell phones.
Again, it's all going in both. All fifteen present. At this time, I ask that when we do have a 12-day rule notification, that we actually waive it at the beginning of the meeting and we'll follow it in order. Number nineteen, if you have a paper copy of it, and we'll get to it at the end of the meeting. So at this time, I'll take a motion to waive the 12-day rule. Motion by Gann, second by Henderson. Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, Father, sir.
Nothing, sir. Madam Clerk. We got a motion carries fifteen on. I think that's more efficient for, at least for me, for better understanding and everything if we're going to get that out of the way. If there's multiple, we'll vote on multiple, but you will be aware of what you're voting on. All right. This time I need a motion to approve minutes for the August 12, 2024 meeting. Motion by Wilson, second by Hooks. Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing, Father.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing, Father.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Up. Lock and clear. Commissioner Parks.
On the, uh, the letter from the Tennessee Comptroller.
Which one?
Number...
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, where it says that we spend money that's not appropriate.
Uh-huh. That was that audit, the audit finding?
Yeah.
Say it again.
So what is that actually?
That was...
And Derek, I want to help, let Derek help me explain what that was in, uh...
Twenty-two.
I have number ten.
Yeah. And...
Well, you were right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. So this is a meaning.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's not bad.
You're waiting to correspond.
Yes, I'll be, uh, four to number five.
All right, let's stand by all that. All right, any other discussion on the minutes? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, carries fifteen oh. Next is approved, uh, accept the committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Hooks, second by Doug. Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing, Father. I'll yield to Commissioner Parks to check this out.
All right, let me get it on the table here. Commissioner Doug.
Nothing.
All right, any discussion?
So, just curiosity, where that, that was a, uh, an error in overspending a line item related to capital in education. So one forty-one, I believe. Derek, Jennifer, is that accurate?
One seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven, I'm sorry, one seventy-seven. Yeah, it was where, well, ultimately, we probably should have been, should have done a cleanup to catch that and didn't, so ended up overspending that. Order called.
Derek, Derek, does that sound accurate? Russell, sorry.
No, we didn't. We did not, it is an entry error during the transition before Derek came in where they had put a million dollars additional in the revenue line, but we did not spend over. So it was just...
Just in accounting terms.
It was just that audit error, just the entry error. No line was over spent.
Thank you.
And on the Public Utility Board, I was saying where they were going to meet with you on the plan for...
Not waiting a response from them.
That's all I got.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barrett.
Yes. Sounds like Commissioner Parks on that comptroller, they wanted to get us before he, before he said we were doing a good job.
That cost us three in a row, by the way.
Uh, on the, on, on number one, sometimes we forget what good things are going on in the county. The four H folks are, this is a great before, uh, sometimes we get lost in that. Chairman, listen, I mean, there's every committee.
They are to be, did we have anyone for that?
Uh, on, on number two, on the, on the, uh, the Rome County Attorney Review Board, just, just ask if someone on the, on the number one, the long-term management store developmental mercury, is that something that's ongoing?
It's, no, it's not. It's, it's just being looked at, it's just being kept there.
So it's just something we need to monitor or something?
If something comes up, yes, we will.
Okay. Uh, and, and number eleven, on our agreement with Kingston, all, all we did there was we moved money around, right? We gave them, we gave them money to two fifty instead of the water bill, we gave it to them on the, on the, on the bridge.
Yeah, we, we, they forgave the debt, that's what this agreement was, and we took that portion, we would have paid them and tacked it on to what we paid Wattsburg Utilities, right? Yeah.
And, and that project is...
It is. We cut the checks last week, they're, they're in engineering phase right now. Mickey hasn't given us a date when they'll break down, but Mickey will be here next month and we can ask him in person.
And that's, that's, is that the same grant that Senator Yeager was talking about giving to...
Senator Yeager got one million dollars appropriated for that project.
That's the same project, okay. It, it looks like we've got so much information this month on, on, on various, on various things, but on number fourteen, I just, I thought it was interesting that our life expectancy in Rome County is seventy-four years, uh, that's number forty-one in the state. Uh, our, uh, most, most of our stuff, we, we tended to be, I think, pretty much in the middle of the state. Lots of information here and, and we'll talk about it in resolution later with, with our law enforcement. Good information, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Makes you consider retirement planning for your marriage. Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I was actually going to look around, just around the county, see if they got five or six more years on them. I might have to move it back. Uh, I would like to look at number four, uh, where they're talking about the Operation Center for the, or where we met at the Operation Center for the jail that's come out of Plan of Action, that they were there for twelve years in, uh, Plan of Action for the jail. I don't know how big that is, that they've come out of that. That's probably one of the biggest. Uh, that's, that's actually a rarity, uh, that a jail correction center actually comes out of a Plan of Action. We were in it for twelve years, probably the longest in the state, and for us to make a turnaround where we're out in that, we've got a clean slate, but I would like to encourage us to move forward and, and, you know, when we were talking, uh, they met, I'll keep this brief, where, you know, we were wanting, uh, some things for the inmates, you know, so the recidivism rate stays down. This is the best time to implement our plans to help them help that stay down, because now you're out front of that plan. This is, because nobody in here wants to be on the jail, I don't think. That's, that's very costly to taxpayers, so, um, I just thought that was really good and kudos to them in getting them compliance on that. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wilson, so two things on that. Number one is, uh, on the, on your rundown, you all have it on your desk, the last page, I think it's the last page, you'll see, uh, the jail report. So we want to keep you up to date on average monthly, next to the last page.
Yeah, I'll see it.
Okay, next to next to the last page, the bottom. So you see there, the numbers continue to, to stay well below a threshold. We want to keep you informed of that. Sheriff's Office has been working with this really well and getting those numbers. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, that, to your point, we do need to continue to meet, to think about classification. That was one of the things that that jail study pointed out, that we are behind in our ability to classify employees, we need to be paying attention to that. And the third thing is, you all appropriated over sixty thousand dollars in opioid funds in April for, to, for the first time to pay for their programs, over twenty-five programs that the jail offers their inmates. Uh, and they, and we're going to talk about that here in just a little bit. Laura Connor is here and just hired a new employee that's going to help sustain that momentum after they get out of jail. So a lot of great information.
Good.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, what number did you say that was corresponding?
Four.
It's, that's budget, it can't be four.
Yeah, well, maybe, I think I'm looking at from down here, I have to go back.
See, I'm four is budget.
Is it four?
I have to go back.
Is, uh... All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen oh. Uh, next is, uh, notaries, uh, they're posted, uh, so please take this time to look over them and I have a motion by Junior Henderson, a second by Charlotte Cunningham. Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your work, sir.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Nothing, sir.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion carries, uh, all right, at this time, uh, hearing of, uh, delegation, or a hearing from the public, so if you have something to address the county commission, please step forward at this time. Be mindful of the three-minute time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Walsh, two oh eight West Shore Drive, Rockwood. Thank you. I've got two subjects I'd like to discuss with you. One of them is Dollar Tree stores. Uh, I do a lot of traveling in the south, back and forth to Alabama and Georgia, and I've noticed the proliferation of these stores in every area. So I started looking around here because we've got a few new ones in the last year, maybe two years. And, um, Dollar General's the predominant one. They started out with twenty thousand locations in two thousand and eleven, now they have thirty-five thousand locations. Their business model deems that they build and open enough stores to open three every day of the year. Now, they're saturated in Alabama, they're saturated in Mississippi, they're saturated in Georgia. And the problem is, and on the surface, it looks like, well, this is a good thing, they're probably providing a need to the community, but it actually has the opposite effect because they, they shortstop the grocery chains, and the grocery chains are the ones what they quote healthy food. I mean, where people can go and get lettuce and tomatoes and vegetables and stuff like that. Predominantly, they're preying on people with EBT cards, and they're actually increasing the poverty level in their mode of operation. At this point in time, more than seventy-five communities and fifty cities have bought plans for additional dollar stores. A couple of the big ones be Atlanta, Georgia, and Birmingham, Alabama, but there's over fifty of them, and then there's seventy-five other communities. So I'm, I'm not against competition, I'm not against capitalism, but I think it's reasonable to assume from what I'm seeing around us within a hundred and fifty, two-hundred mile radius, that that saturation is going to come to Rome County, and I'd like to ask you guys not to let that happen. I don't, I don't see a benefit to having a Dollar General around every other corner, quite honestly. So, anyway, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
Hey, just to add to that, um, their model is also, I'm not going to disagree with you, that's for sure, they're everywhere. Uh, their model is attacking Walmart, and I was actually reading on one of their things, so they wanted to keep people from even going, that's Walmart's biggest competitor, and I didn't know that. And they're attacking them from the outside, and that was the reason I read that they were everywhere, but I'm not going to say you're wrong, I'd say you are correct, but I thought that was very interesting.
Well, you're, you're correct, and their business model is the same as Walmart's with cannibalization. So they move into areas that look like a desert of stores or whatever, they close the existing shops, the old mom and pop stores and whatnot, and then they cannibalize on their own stores in the end, and close one, close two, keep one open. So they're not always a benefit. On the surface, it looks like, well, they're employing a half a dozen, ten employees at each store, they're, they're all going to get fired and the employment's going to go right down. So anyway, thank you guys for listening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Monty Prince, Kingston. Uh, I just wanted to take a minute to update you all on something, if that would be permissible, leave a couple of copies of things, uh, three topics, less than three minutes, hopefully. Uh, one copy I did not bring, it's a particular interest for all of us, Asian Carp, uh, we just submitted a letter from my office to, uh, the Tennessee Realtors to solicit their report, their support in helping to push to get these barriers in place. Economically, that's a devastating thing for us and, uh, we've got to continue that fight. So I'd seek any help I could get, appreciate y'all doing the letter, and, and so we're taking a little bit different, uh, approach with, uh, the letter to the Tennessee Realtors of this, this year. Uh, second topic, and I will pass this, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll give it to Mr. Barrett, you're going to pass it around. I took this to all ninety-five counties, mostly, meant all ninety-five counties, but I took a copy of that and I felt obliged to bring y'all a copy of it, that's the Prayer Resolution. We have, uh, the General Assembly in Tennessee has led the nation once again, and so that started here in Rome County, and I want y'all to have a copy of that, so I'll leave that with you with your permission. And then the third thing, I'll pass this one around to Mr. Hooks, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And this is a, uh, a letter that we sent to Governor Lee. Uh, this past year, we passed House Bill twenty-one ninety, which authorized up to a brigade-sized force of Tennessee National Guardsmen, uh, to be deployed to the Texas border to repel the invasion. Um, that went into effect in late May, uh, we appropriated dollars for that, we've not sent anybody, so that, uh, letter's just simply asking Governor Lee, why not, and what are we going to do about it? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, good to see everyone. I'm Justin Snow, I'm the president and CEO of the Rome Lights, and as Mr. Barrett mentioned earlier, we do have a lot of good things going on in the county. We have a lot of momentum, a lot of energy, a lot of excitement. Um, one of the things that I get excited about is all the events that we do in the county. So, uh, we usually close off the summer with Labor Day events, rocking the ramp in Rockwood and parade for Harriman, um, to close off, the lead's into fall, and I want to give everybody the list of the events coming up in the fall. Lots going on. Um, tonight, Main Street Monday, so we can leave this meeting and head on over to Rockwood for Main Street Monday, it goes on till nine o'clock. Um, Tennessee Medieval Fair in Harriman, um, there's three dates in October. The big event in Oliver Springs, the, the October Sky Festival is October the nineteenth. The fourth week of October, we'll be celebrating Kingston pretty much that whole week for their, for their, for their birthday. This was not on the, um, event sheet, but the elected officials barbecue, y'all will get an invitation for that. I think it'll go out this week, but that'll be October the third at Kingston City Park, So we had some pep rallies last week. It, it didn't have anything to do with Ike, these were separate. Um, as the school year ramps up, pep rallies were hosted at all five high schools, um, last week to continue motivating students to consider post-secondary education or apprenticeships as their next step after graduation. These rallies, which are part of the seventy percent by two thousand twenty-five initiative, will fill with energy and excitement as students gather to celebrate their progress. Um, speakers included Ben Sterling with Tennessee Chief, we also had Jennifer Brown from the Rome Lights, and if I'm not mistaken, Wade, you were there to give the pep, you went to all five pep rallies. So these events are not only as a celebration of school spirit, but also as reminders of many pathways available to students after high school, reinforcing the initiative and the goal to empower them to take charge of their future. This is very important because we're bringing the jobs, but it's also our responsibility to make sure that they're prepared and ready for the jobs of the future. So you might ask how we're doing, and we do have a lot of progress. Two thousand twenty-two, our college going rate was fifty-two percent, so we had a lot of work to do. Two thousand twenty-three, we, we reported sixty-four point one percent, which is a twelve percent grade, uh, gain, seven point five percent higher than the state average, which is something to be really proud of. These numbers don't include the apprenticeship numbers, and reporting is always a year behind, but we're well on our way to achieving this goal a whole year early. So, pep rally last week. I'll close this, um, in your pocket. Last Wednesday was, was a historic and moment, a monumental day, I'm glad I got to spend it with most of everybody with the mission, starting here with the meeting and then with the event itself, but, um, in your pocket, I gave everybody an official press release from ACD and Mascol for the event, and then there's a nice write-up and a signal the next day that I'm not sure everybody had. So that concludes my report, and I'll answer any questions that y'all might have.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Hamilton.
Justin, are we doing anything intentional to communicate to the parents of these students about the seventy percent?
That's a great question.
If not, I would highly encourage we figure out a way and a strategy to communicate to the parents, as the ones who are helping these students make these decisions.
We've done a lot of social media blasts, and of course, you know, that you're, you're all's presence in the schools speaking to the kids, and we've done social media blasts, they've had multiple meetings with our counselors who are in touch with the parents and the families.
Anything we can do to communicate a message?
We keep a sign here downstairs as soon as you walk in the door.
Yeah, I saw that.
Trying to catch people.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, good luck. All I have for one, chair recognizes Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah, just, just one point, a venture treaty where one kilogram of enriched uranium saves a hundred and seventy tons of coal. So, so that's, that's why we're on such a, such a big, big push here and, and, uh, that's huge. Thank you.
Was it self-formal, most taxes on? Chair recognizes Commissioner Gann.
So what's your next trick? I've done nothing, I've helped this all up, so, I hope.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you, so, but activity brings action, Dean, we have a lot to be proud of, a lot of great things in the county. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Justin. Justin, just, just a moment. So when Wade called all of us individually to his office, and he, he discussed this, and with a lot of excitement, and I think everyone of us left with a lot of excitement. But the one thing that I thought of is, what are we going to do for Justin? You know, because without you, a lot of this really just does not happen. And I mean, it's great that the governor comes to Oak Ridge, it's great that the senators and representatives and the congresspeople are there, that's great for both, it looks really good. But it's the people that's done the work, you, Wade, and so many people that are involved down here, that got it to that attention up there. Uh, I don't know what we can do for you, honestly, I do, I don't know, but I think all of us owe you a debt of gratitude, because you are taking it personal to invest in Rome County. And I think it's the best for this commission to invest in you. When you need something, or you need help, I think you need to have the freedom and liberty to come to this commission and say, because I think you've earned our trust, I think you showed a commitment to the growth of Rome County. I think that when you come to us, we need to be listening to you. I think the leaders in this county need to listen to you. Uh, I appreciate everything you've done, and I know without you, this project that we're all so proud about would not be here today. So as Commissioner, I want to say how much I value and appreciate you, sir. The end. Keep the law short, we don't encourage being... All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else to address the county commission?
Hello, John Dennis from Rockwood, and, uh, Miss David Bell, somebody good, you may just take a little place. Uh, it's been a while since I've been here, but, uh, the reason I'm here is to promote Patriots' Day, which developed, I already know horrifying nine eleven, and a very sad situation, but we've got to make it the best we can, and, and I'm here to promote something I, uh, I'd like y'all to consider doing on Patriots' Day, from seven to nine P.M. tonight, from Atlanta, uh, the State Farm Arena, the Tabernacle Choir at Temple Square, a world-renowned choir, is going to be joining a couple of schools, and, uh, it's going to be live streamed from seven to nine on Patriots' Day. Uh, it's called, a program called A Song of Hope, A Song of Hope, and I promise you, it will be a song of hope. Our, our country's under attack, and, you know, that's not the only terrorist activity that's happened in our country, country. I, I'm not going to judge and say whether this was or not, I'm away, can I travel a lot. A few months ago, we were up in Baltimore and made a delivery and came back and crossed the Francis Scott Key Bridge, and next time we went out a month later, we had to go through the tunnel, because a bridge was hit by a freighter and taken down. Most of you probably, probably well aware of that. Anyway, Francis Scott Key, of all the bridges in the United States, Francis Scott Key is the, is the, was born about seventeen seventy-nine over Maryland, it's about sixty-four years, and in that sixty-four years, he got to watch Fort McHenry being bombed by the British relentlessly for twenty-five hours, and he got to watch our flag raise, raise gently up to attention. And, uh, he, I guess he took out his pen and, and wrote down what, uh, we know today, it was called McHenry's poem or something like that, Fort McHenry's poem every time. Uh, we know, as of nineteen thirty-one, we know it as, uh, our national anthem, Congress did it. And, uh, for my last twenty-two seconds, I want to play the first verse of the national anthem, if I can get it on here, by the Tabernacle Choir at Temple Square, and y'all may stand if you wish. Since COVID, they've, uh, taken the, taken the lead and, and going on and on, the coaches have taken this further and further, and, uh, some, some teams aren't even coming out onto the field, and, and, uh, I think this, this is tragic, this is tragic. History's been a lot... Anyway, y'all may stand if you wish for the, for the first verse... But anyway, y'all may stand if you wish for the, for the first verse of the national anthem.
Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. It'll just be, take a moment. That's what we're going to convene and speak with our lawyer at that time. All right? Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to the county attorney's point, but at this time, Greg's not with us, but we're going to call him, but we're going to go into executive session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask all of you, as, as we pointed out before, to please refer to the Rome County rundown you've got in front of you. Uh, this report continues to evolve as we talk to you about the information you want and need for this, but please dig into it, let us know what you want. Jennifer, you please walk us through the basic points in your part of the report.
So the first two graphs on the very first page shows the 24 and 25 revenues and expenditures. So we'll be updating these monthly, so you can kind of see last year versus this year, how revenues come in, expenditures are going out. Um, on the next page shows our fund balances and how we ended 2024.
So you see, we ended, we ended well.
We did. So it was, um, 75 million roughly, that's how we ended, um, 2024, and all fund balances total is 75 million, um, which put the general fund at 49%. So we want to stay in between, uh, 35 and 45. So we may need to look at, uh, adjusting our pennies whenever we go over the start-up budget process for this year. Any questions, James?
No questions for Jennifer? Well, all in the light of state, if you may, judging our pennies.
Yes, so the general fund has 85 pennies in it now. So with how we ended 2024, put us at 49% in our fund balance policy. So our fund balance policy is 35 to 45%. So we're at 49 right now. So we may want to think about moving pennies to capital. And do I?
It's always a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for you? Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, I want to thank Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Hamilton, uh, for participating in the basic county finance course offered by C T S. I think this will be very helpful during budget review season. Either of y'all have anything to add to that? Was it, was it helpful? Was it?
It did very much.
I took a bottle of Sabre, I'm going to tell you that. I won't tell you what else I took.
I appreciate the county's opportunity to do so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Um, as, as we've talked about with Justin, uh, last Wednesday, I was so thankful for each of you, uh, when Governor Lee announced the location of Rondo, USA, the Oak Ridge Reservation. Every one of you met with me, uh, to learn more about the project, so I just want to thank you for your support in helping get this done. Uh, as you know, this is the largest single investment by a company in the history of the state, as the governor announced a multi-billion dollar investment. Of course, bringing over 300 high-paying jobs to Rome County is great, but the tax revenue that this project will generate will make it possible for us to do things for the county that wouldn't have been possible for without significantly raising taxes, and none of us want to do that. Uh, and as you heard Mark Mametoff say in our special call meeting, uh, he is preparing an economic incentive plan with the company to finalize the details of the tax increment incentive plan that you all will be asked to approve hopefully on October 14th. So expect a new news cycle coming out when they see that number, that final number, and yours will probably be in your packet, uh, for the October 14th meeting. I am happy to report also that we have a final breakthrough with LCUB. Uh, LCUB has proposed a new agreement to serve Rome Regional Business and Technology Park in which Rome, uh, Watts Bar Utility District would be the provider of wastewater services to the tenants of the park. Uh, Watts Bar would be a single-tap customer of LCUB. This agreement enables the service area for wastewater services to grow outside the park. Uh, without a new agreement, LCUB will not enable additional service outside the park boundaries. Uh, this proposal will go to the IDB on the 23rd of this month, and then will come back to you on October 14th. So Justin and I have been working on that, getting that agreement ready, um, and I know that the parties-
that the parties involved in the agreement will be here also on October 14th. I mentioned this to you last month, but we are also happy to report that Craig Reinhardt will start as a records management tomorrow. Craig, stand up. Craig has worked in the purchasing office with Lynn Varham on a part-time basis up until now for the last eight months. He's done a fantastic job, and we're excited about having him in this role. I think he's perfect for it. This is critical time in records management because we have to plan for the removal of records from the Michael Dunn facility as we get ready to vacate it in a month or so, a little over a month, to our new document storage center once it's finished. And also tied to that is, I'll mention this more when it comes up on the agenda, but Kelly Broyles will move from records management at the old courthouse to Craig's soon-to-be old position in the purchasing office, and she'll split time between the purchasing and accounting office to make a full-time position. We'll talk more about that when it comes up on the agenda. The health department project remains on time and on track for the October 28th completion date. That includes the new document storage center adjacent to it. Also, I want to recognize any members of Rome, of youth leadership of Rome County. If you please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for coming, being here today. Thanks all for being here. And then lastly, April Miller has a short statement about important regional coverage that was provided over the weekend. April, you read that statement for us, please.
This is from the family of Jeremy Sutton, the paramedic that was killed in the line of duty last weekend. His sister works for us. Says, "To the county commission and citizens of Rome County, on behalf of my family and myself, I want to express our deepest gratitude for the outpouring of love and support that we have received during this incredibly difficult time. It has been a little over a week, and the kindness, compassion, and generosity from this community have touched our hearts in ways we could never imagine. Losing someone so close is never easy, but your thoughtful words, gestures, and prayers have provided a source of comfort and strength when we needed it most. In moments of grief, it is the unity and support of others that remind us that we are not alone. Rome County is not just a place where I work. It is a family, and for that, I am forever grateful. Please know that your love has been felt deeply, and we will never forget the kindness you've shown us. Thank you for helping us carry this heavy burden with your unwavering support. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. With heartfelt appreciation, Cindy Sutton and family."
April, what do we do for, talk to us just briefly about what we did for Jefferson County, what other counties did for us?
So, not after the accident, we sent a truck up to help them cover, and then Ray County EMS, AMR McMahon, AMR Knox will send trucks here for us so that we could attend the service. We had, I think, 16 members attending the funeral services to stand beside Cindy, and then we provided covers for Jefferson County, not following the funeral. And I think in all, we run about 14 calls for Jefferson County while they dealt with this.
That's good. It's just an incredible example of just helping each other out, which is what we're all about. Just want to thank April and Tim for their leadership in supporting other counties that would do the exact same thing for us if we were in no shoes. That concludes our report. Glad to take in questions.
All right, Chair recognizes Mr. Hokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to know if you got an update on broadband? I had a call proceeding before I came to the meeting, and I know it's all over the county, but we have locations that, you know, with technology the way it is, and on my end, we're not able to utilize that technology because we don't have the broadband that we need. A widow lady called, and she paid I don't know how much money out to have video surveillance in her home, in and around her home, and she was devastated when she found out that her broadband wasn't, all we have of ours is AT&amp;T, and I wouldn't curse that, but, you know, it's not much. You know, when they say we're giving you, you're 100 megabytes per second, you know, you might be getting 40. But it's something that we need to work on, push hard on. We've been fighting this battle for a long time. I told you there's some things in work, but, you know, we need to, we need to see what we can do.
So, we've been waiting for word on the last mile of rent. We've put all of our eggs in this basket per ECD's encouragement to do so. We've been until for what, two, at least two months now? Next week, next week, next week, next week. I've resorted to fugging ECD on a daily basis now to get an answer on this. There's a new round of a big bucket of funds coming up that we don't want to have to even tap into. We want the awards from what we were encouraged to apply for, and we just can't get an answer right now. We've tapped into every leverage point we know how to. Senator Yeager's been intimately involved since, for almost two years in this. So, we are working hard and trying, and I'm just as frustrated as they are. We will keep trying until we get it all covered.
Thank you, Chair. Chair recognizes Mr. Murray.
Going with broadband, we've got 75% access. It puts us 40th in the county, I mean, in the state, so we're working on that. Comcast says they're waiting every day. I mean, they're just day to day waiting on our, on our, on our city utility deal. Are we keeping any reserve?
Well, there, in the, in the agreement, there is not much area for reserve, and there's a couple reasons for this. One, the current capacity, daily capacity for Rome Regional is about 6,000 gallons a day. So, the reserve says 750. Now, I'm going to share that agreement with you all and let you go through it and advise on how we move forward with this. Where I think it is most beneficial to us and why I would recommend its passage is it lets us extend service to one key potentially industrial property outside the park on the interstate, and then across the interstate where we have developers looking at residential. It basically comes down to if we do this agreement, we can take the service, we can take sewer service there. If we don't do the agreement, we can't. And I know from talking to Justin, we just, we're not going to recruit high-water users. They're just, that's not the market, and we don't have the properties to even recruit those types of projects. Would you, would you agree?
So, we're saying that if there was a subdivision going in or a big, big company coming outside the park, LCUB would hook them up to serve?
No, they would. They absolutely would.
That's what I'm saying.
But it doesn't require a reserve built into the park's service agreement to get LCUB to want to serve that?
And I guess where I'm going to on this is, this is the kind of thing we have to really be careful of with this Oak Ridge situation. We literally have made Lenore City on the map. We put, we put them on the map by paying $2.6 million for a sewer line down Highway 321. None of that happens without, without us, and now we're getting, we're on the outside looking in at all of that, and who's to make sure? And I don't know how you all felt, and I felt like a stepchild over there the other day. I mean, it was all Oak Ridge. I mean, we didn't, we didn't hear Rome County until Senator Yeager mentioned Rome County, and he was what, fifth or sixth speaker? So, I think we just have to be really careful to avoid and learn from that because that was a costly, that was a costly, costly situation, and we put, we put Lenore City on the map.
I understand.
So, if we can, if we can withdraw anything out of, out of, out of any of that, because what happens is, that helps us as they get to their 80% on their sewer plant. And they have to start, when they have to start doing...
So, we're kind of trading. It helps them with their capacity issues not having to expand, and it helps us get sewer to areas we wouldn't have...
But they're going to put sewer in those areas. They're not going to, they're not going to let a developer come in and say, "We're not going to provide..."
Well, they're telling us point blank they won't.
Well, I mean, I can't imagine, I can't imagine them not doing that. But anyway, that's what we're giving up. I think we just have to be really, really cautious moving forward on any of these deals because this is what we end up with, and we've always been on the losing end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeager's talking first, we couldn't understand him anymore.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Brackett.
Have we hired a septic inspector?
Glenn, Glenn had spinal surgery Tuesday. He actually tried to come into office today. We sent him home. He has, Brooke, any updates on where we stand on that right now?
So, we did just receive Jefferson County's contract that they went into the state with, so who and Taylor will be reviewing that over the next month. We're hoping to have the whole program up and running by January.
I'm pushing percent.
Well, I was just looking. 22 new homes in July, nine mobile homes. I mean, it's just getting more and more, but the state lost their person. I guess somebody spilled them, but we need to put them in vinyl.
All right, if no other questions, we'll move on to special orders. First special order, confirmation appointment of Mike Gibber for the Rome County Planning Commission. The term will expire August 31st, 2028. Motion by Ferguson, second by Henderson, Commissioner Ferguson.
Here's, I think Mike could make a good man to be on the planning commission. I know him, and he's a good fellow, and I think he made the right choice.
Commissioner Henderson.
I agree with this statement.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Next, and I'm going to go through these pretty fast. Motion carries. Confirmation appointment of Carrie Cagle to the Rome County Planning Commission to the new term will expire August 31st, 2028. Motion by, motion by Commissioner Dove, second by Gan, Commissioner Dove.
Think she'll do a great job?
Commissioner Gan.
Appreciate her willingness to serve.
All right, number three, approval of surety bond.
We got a sound.
You know, I'd be good to vote on. I told you I was going to go through them real fast.
Tell the truth.
Motion carries. Three, approval of surety bond for Cody Crispere as a youth service officer in the amount of $2,500. Motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Dove, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, just, we have to do it.
Commissioner Dove.
Nothing.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Number four, approval of surety bond for Jennifer Johnson as a youth service officer in the amount of $2,500. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
Madam Clerk. Approval of surety bond for Lenora Doyle Spangler as a youth service officer in the amount of $2,500. Motion by Wilson, second by Henderson, Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your willingness, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, approval of surety bond for Dennis Ferguson as a road supervisor in the amount of $100,000. Approval by Commissioner Gan, second by Wilson, Commissioner Gan.
We don't use it, sir.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Approval of surety bond for Molly A. Hardup as a property assessor in the amount of $50,000.
Randy Kirby needs to vote on the last. We got it.
All right, motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Berry.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries. All right, no zoning resolutions tonight. We do have 18 items for new business. They should go pretty fast. Resolution 924-01, resolution of electing a chairman of the Rome County Commission. Motion by... Well, it's been motions, nominations.
I'll say.
Cease nomination. Make a motion.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Thank you all for electing me again. I appreciate your trust in me. Do what? All right, 924-02, resolution electing a chairman pro temp of the Rome County Commission.
I nominate Travis Parks.
I second, sir.
I cease nomination.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
No, I'm sorry, I was trying to...
I said it without my voice, so... All right, motion carries. Thank you. Travis, same.
What's that?
I said same. You appreciate everybody.
Appreciate it, guys.
All right. Next, resolution 924-03, a resolution setting the regular meeting date for the Rome County Legislative Board. Motion by Wilson, second by Dove. Commissioner Wilson.
I feel like it's going pretty good the way it is, getting out of here a little early. I like to keep it the way it is.
All right, Commissioner Dove.
I agree. I did have one question about the Columbus Day, since it is not a county holiday that we will be meeting regularly.
Well, Columbus Day in the Rome County employees happen on July 5th.
Okay.
So we'll be open, the courthouse will be open that day. So we can meet that day.
All right. So that, that's filed, right?
That is.
That is.
So last year we postponed it. I'll be down.
What can I have you? Wow, we can't have a vision without you.
I mean, you can.
But no, but no.
Last year we did postpone.
This is regular meeting, though.
Yeah. We did change that last year.
We did. And if we want, I'm okay with it being changed. I can tell, change, we can change it then. At next month, we'll meet 21st.
Yep, a simple, though.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion?
Next month is the 21st.
I've got one question. So when we lump the planning commission in, do we have to say that? And all this, at six o'clock, if we have a plan, that just stays the same?
No, so subcommittees are different. They're set up by the chairman of that subcommittee, which I prefer all meetings having an 1,800 or 400.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, 15. Next is adopting the 0924-04, resolution adopting rules of procedure for the Rome County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much the same list of rules that we've operated on in the past. It seemed to fit us well, so I'll continue to do the same.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, resolution 0924-05. And look, before you bring it, because you will need the names that I'm gonna put out there. Let me tell you how I'm gonna do this, so that it is equal and divided evenly and fairly. If you were on it, you will not be on the committee on committees this time. If you're not on it this time, it'll cycle to you. But we're gonna try to get all the four corners of Rome County, all that committee on committees. So just bear with me. If you're not on it this year, and you weren't on it last year, the only person that will repeat being on it this year will be Travis Parks, because otherwise, it would be me on it. I don't know that really on committee on committees that I need to serve on that and project any undue bias or anything else. But I want a fair and equal layout when we divide up the committee on committees the same way. Spread it to the four corners, and it may be time to change some of these longstanding meetings, so. With that said, resolution 0924-05, committee on committees Nancy Hamilton, Charlotte Cunningham, Travis Parks, Kirby, Commissioner Kirby, and Commissioner Ferguson. So that is your committee on committees right there. And as I said, if you're not on it, I tried to pick a delegate from each divisionary or each major city. You ain't on it this time, you'll be on it next time, guys. So, and I think that's the fairest I can say it, do it, and then next year, same thing. So, all right, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Berry, a second by Commissioner Brackett. Commissioner Berry.
So Lou, appreciate, appreciate the way you're doing it.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, 15 of them. All right. Resolution 0924-06, resolution authorizing the county attorney to file lawsuit regarding the properties as listed on the attached case request form for violating Rome County Resolution 1218-05. Motion by Wilson, second by Gan. Commissioner Wilson.
In favor, if it gets to this point, they've had plenty of warning in time.
Commissioner Gan.
Nothing further, sir.
Commissioner Goff.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I got a last question from Bruce. This D H R E, is that a, I mean, is it a company that owns that place, or? I mean, normally, we're seeing names on these reports.
It would probably be a company or like a LLC that owns it, instead of just a private person.
Are they local, or are they?
I can ask Vanessa, and you get back to you on that.
Well, you know, I was just curious. It needs to be done. I mean, that's, that's a stretch with a burner. And, I mean, so, yeah, it's, I mean, it's definitely an eyesore. And I have had people complain about it, but I wear Vanessa out on other stuff, so I kind of trot back off of it. She does, she doesn't agree with me, so that's all I have, sir.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, 15. All right, resolution 924-07, resolution exercising the permissive authority granted to the Rome County by Tennessee Code Antae 51116 regarding the incorporation of a building code, safety and health code, and other standardized codes or documents. Motion by Dove, second by Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Dove.
The RV community met three times and broke it. Could you, you'd do a better job than I would have explained what's going on here?
So the committee was formed to see about the possibility of giving people an option for temporarily, temporarily living in an RV and a more permanent, they didn't want to use the permanent, but long-term solution. With the cost of rent, people having a hard time, we worked really hard to come to a compromise that would work for the property assessor, for us as building codes, and for the commissioners in the community. So it should be in your alts packets, what we came up with. We did work really hard on this. There was a lot of research from surrounding counties. There was a lot of state law research on both the RV side and from the property assessor side. So what you guys have before you is what that committee came up with. It is a good option. The community that I have talked to about this, since, since we have done this, are anxiously awaiting this, because it is a good option for those people that can't afford a new home or can't afford rent right now. Your single mothers, you're homeless. It is a good option, whether temporary or whether it be a little bit longer term. So that's what you have before you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Lehman, did you have?
I have nothing. I just appreciate the effort that all, all the peoples put into it.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to the committee. This has been... I guess my only question is, as, as you ride around the county and you see a lot of, a lot of RVs on the same lot as, as a homeowner has. Is that, is that what we're trying to do, is give those folks, so they can, they can actually have a homeowner's and, and one of these RVs on the same property as long as they have these, follow these guidelines?
Correct. So it has to be in an A1 and A, or an A2 zone, that's your agricultural areas. You won't find A1 or A2 in any of the city limits. So that's gonna be more of your county areas.
Good.
They will be able to have the option for the long term, and I do think that it does lay that out. There will be a fee for the long term, but for the long term, they do have to meet building codes for safety reasons. So we're gonna require them to have a deck that is solid. It will be inspected. At that point, it can also be taxed, once they do the long-term option versus the short-term option. But all of the RVs that are currently there, that gives us something to bring them into compliance with, and it also gives us something, if there's somebody violating a rule, now we have something to get those people to come into compliance with, whereas before we didn't.
So, so the folks that have that RV close by, they still have to meet the sewer requirements, and they're gonna get their setup in this, right?
They do. So it's, yes, they do have to have proof, and it depends on if they're doing the temporary or the long term, as to what that proof looks like. Temporary, we would just need to see, are you hooking it up to a septic system? If not, we need to see the receipt for what you plan on getting it empty, getting the tank empty. If it's long term, it does have to be hooked up to septic.
So I guess I have, I guess I have another...
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
So how much is this fee?
So for the long term, it's $300, and that's a one-time fee. For the temporary, it's $100 a year. Is that what we decided, Commissioner? Chairman?
I've slept since then, bro.
I think it's $100 a year.
And that goes to someone?
Yes, so that's, and that's a maximum of 90 days. Now, they can choose to redo that temporary, but it does go just 90 days at a time for the short term.
So that'd be 100 every 90 days. Very generous, Chris Martin.
Correct.
No, that, no, all right, thank you.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooch.
So if you have an RV on the same property, does it have to have its own independent sewer, or do it be able to get?
No, it cannot tap in and share with a home that's already on that lot. It will have to be approved by the state, or when we start doing septic by us, for its own independent septic tank.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, 15. Resolution 924-08, a resolution approving the distribution of the opioid settlement fund received from the state of Tennessee. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, a second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Cunningham.
I serve on that, as well as Mr. Lehman, and the free medical just does an incredible job, absolutely. Any money that we can fix.
Yeah, and I don't think that's over the free medical one, is it? I think 18 is the, the last.
Did I miss it?
No, no, it's over the opioid settlement.
Doctor said I...
They did the same thing.
I got the same resolution as you.
I think it's two versions of the same resolution.
So this is what's supposed to have been pulled? And replaced with the one that we had?
So if, so what you have, Mr. Chairman? You have two versions, '08 and '19 are two versions of the same resolution. We can pass this right now and then not have to do '19, right? Or Jennifer, you said we need to do '19, not '08?
Well, '19, yeah. And '19 is what the committee agrees to appropriate the facts.
So I would, I would advise commission to pull this one.
All right, disregard and withdraw. Commissioner Brackett, did you have anything else on?
That's, I was trying to figure out.
All right, disregard and pull that, let's go on to...
Thank you all. Apologize for the confusion.
Do you need a motion to withdraw this away, Commissioner?
Well, the submitting body withdraws it. I mean, we've got this for him, so. All right, 0924-09, a resolution approving the recommendation of Rome County Opioic Settlement Fund Advisor Council to adopt a strategic plan to address the long-term community needs for addiction recovery and mental health. Motion by... I'm sorry. Yeah, clear, if you can clear this one, clear the submitting bodies wanting the request to pull.
They can make the manual motion if you don't care, because it's being stubborn.
Okay, that's, all right, that's fine.
I'll let the record reflect that, that's not accurate.
Because I'm seeing '07 on the screen, and that's a way up there. So who?
Wilson motion.
Second. Mr. Wilson with the motion, and Mr. Henderson with the second. Mr. Wilson.
The only question I have is for the county executive, are we going to do anything about the, putting that information on the website like we're talking about? So that's gonna, you want to talk about that, or not?
Yeah, first of all, you can clarify, I had a floor for a second.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
If, if you are a member of the Rome County Opioic Council, would you please stand up? We have a few, and we have two commissioners here also. This, this resolution, this strategic plan, was months of work put in by this council to bring to you a recommendation that, you know, we quickly realized a year and a half ago that this group was the group that would perpetually help shape Rome County's approach to, to addiction and recovery, and then, and eventually, mental health, too. So what we understood, instead of just being a committee, Knox County, for example, just met and voted how to divvy it all out, and said that we're done. This committee in and of itself decided, we're not gonna take that approach. We think we got a chance to really move the needle with this, and because of that, created a strategic plan that's in your packet, that will help sustain how we approach this long term. And we really think it's gonna make a difference. To illustrate that, Dr. Boat has got some numbers that he'd like to share with you right now.
All right, hey, before you do that, let's, let's attend to the resolution itself. Second was by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Henderson, do you have anything?
Nothing further, just appreciate everything everybody's doing.
I apologize.
Please.
Dr. Boat.
I'm pleased to report to the commission that Rome overdose deaths in Rome County this year are less than half of what they were last year. Year to date, there have been 20, still 20 too many. Last year, at this time, we had 48, with a total of 71 for the year. Biggest problem continues to be fentanyl. Of those 20, 15 involve fentanyl, 11 involve methamphetamine. I think our committee's efforts are paying off. The Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition's doing a great job. Our DA's doing a great job prosecuting dealers that sell people these that result in fatalities, so it's a combination of factors. We also, when we first met, when our committee first met, we determined that the biggest need we had was resources for rehabilitation. And I'm pleased to announce that we have navigators now in the health department and in the schools, trained counselors that can direct people in the right direction to get the help they need. Covenant, we worked with, partnered with Covenant to establish one that'll be based at the hospital. They'll be interviewing six people this week, and should have one hired by the end of the week.
That was all right.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Period 15. I didn't say it. All right, thank you. Resolution adopt a long-range strategic, well, we pull, we're pulling 10 submitting bodies, pulling 10, going to 11.
Point of clarification here, Mr. Chairman. This hasn't been through committee for approval yet, where that's why we'll put it on the October meeting.
All right. It needs to go in front of the long range, before it comes here. 0924-11, a resolution to reflect the changes in, to revenue expenditures for the general capital funds 171, ambulance for Tennessee, essentials, equipment grant. Motion by Berry, second by Commissioner Gan, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, just receiving the, receiving the grant.
Commissioner Gan.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, resolution 0924-12, resolution to amend revenues and expenditures for General Fund 101 for D O E Department of Energy Grant that has been awarded to the Rome County Offices and Emergency Services. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Kirby. Commissioner Cunningham.
Take your grant when you can get it.
Mr. Kirby.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, 15. All right, resolution 924-14, resolution to reflect changes in expenditures in General Capital Project Fund 171. Well, I thought that was gonna go fast, and I got it. All right, resolution to reflect changes in salary budget lines in purchasing and accounting offices to allow two part-time positions to become one full-time position in General Fund 101. Motion by Commissioner Gan, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Gan.
County executive already explained this earlier.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, 15. Now let's do 14, a resolution to reflect the changes in expenditures for General Fund Project Fund 171, Swamp Pond Sports Complex, to purchase topsil for the complex. Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I think something well-nated is gonna be expanding soccer field.
Commissioner Burke.
Yes, sir, we just found a good deal on the topsil, been looking, found some, and grabbed it, and looking to expand.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, 924-15, a resolution concerning parking and camping at the Rome County Park, or something. Commissioner Brackett, Commissioner Gan, Commissioner Brackett.
I think this could be a good thing. I think we've had some problems over that way. I was gonna say, last night, we was at Rome County Park walking, and you're talking about something that's looking nice, and the people are really bragging on it. The guys are doing a great job, families everywhere, all the way up to dark, right at dark. We just, I think this would be a good thing for the park.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gan.
Just a jewel of Rome County, sir.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, 15. Resolution placing supply, or circle of certain Rome County insurance vehicles. And you have an added updated list we're gonna accept in, listed to attach sheet, so. Motion by Brackett, second by Henderson. Commissioner Brackett.
I say we get rid of them, and hopefully, we find the vehicles, our new septic employee.
Commissioner Henderson.
We don't need, just get rid of them.
Commissioner Burke.
We need, we need to amend it, to add, to add the vehicles, that's different than the resolution. We added three vehicles.
If we, if we need to, let's do so at this time. So you make a motion to amend?
I'll say it.
Motion to amend by Berry, second by Ferguson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the amended resolution is what we're, with the amended sheet that was given, that's what we're gonna vote on. Any other discussion, Commissioner Henderson, for what is your?
Nothing.
Commissioner Berry, anything else?
Yes, sir, I think we've had some, we've had some folks, I think the city of Rockwood was interested in a couple. And as Commissioner Brackett said, we talked about the new health department, where we need one, and, and, so that's, that's what we are doing. We added, they asked, they added three more to us in our meeting, so that's the amended resolution.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, 17. Resolution placing surplus plus a Toro grill mower, 3100D, serial number for read, from the parks and wrecks. Motion by Kirby, second by Gan. Commissioner Kirby.
It's a good thing to help to spend this.
Commissioner Gan, it's good to share our resources, sir. Any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, resolution 924-18, a resolution amending the General Purpose School Fund 141 reflecting changes in revenue expenditure as well for the 24, 25, 15 years. Motion by Commissioner Berry, a second, second by Commissioner Kirby.
Just counting, we got it.
All right, Commissioner Kirby.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. You guys stand by, we have the 112 table, which we're gonna vote on. You guys stand by, we have the 112 papers we're going to vote on.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries, 15. All right, next to our final resolution, 0924-19, a resolution reflecting changes in expenditure in the opioid fund 127. Got it. Motion by Cunningham, second by Lehman. Commissioner Cunningham.
Like I started to say before, the free medical clinic does great work, and they deserve this money and anything we can do for them.
Commissioner Lehman.
I agree.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, is there any other business coming for the county commission, Mr. Chairman?
That was the wrong. Would it be, would it be helpful to the committee on committees if we submitted to them a list of committees that?
So, yeah, but as I said, I want to divide the subcommittees up in the, in the same thing, it's the only guidance I give. And one, that's going to be a hard job, too, sitting down and doing that. But if there is a desired committee that you want on, please submit it to whoever, they 'll have to hold a meeting. Dr. Hamilton, your name was mentioned first, so you'll have to hold the meeting, then elect the chairman. So at that time, communicate to myself, and I'll communicate to whoever elected this chairman, or if you know the chairman, you can communicate to them. All right, any other business coming for the county commission? Hearing none, seeing none, taking a motion to adjourn. Have a say. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.